And let's open the September 27th meeting of the planning.
I thought it was the second one too.
First item on the agenda is minutes, it's September 13th.
Move to accept.
Second.
It just said.
Discussion?
Yes. Second paragraph up in the bottom. See them? I would like to see them. Oh, excuse me, third line on the second one. Over the town, over to the town?
Where are you?
Yeah, you got me. On the first page, page one. Yeah. Down near the very bottom. Yeah.
It says over the town, and I think it should say over to the town.
It's turned over to the town, yeah, okay. There's just a two missing, yeah.
Oh, okay, I see what you're talking about.
Okay. And that's it?
Is that it?
That's it.
That's not bad.
No.
I'll take that.
Any other questions, comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
I'm staying.
Okay, A and R's, item two, we have none. So right on to item three. 163 Maple Ave, pre-conference agricultural accessory use site plan. And this is from Richard Salt Feltz, Maple Ave, Drury Lane. And... I don't know, Dave, should we have him start this with an explanation?
Yeah, so first off, so this is not the hearing. In the site plan regulations, there is a requirement for a pre-hearing conference to be held. This is an opportunity for the board to get our first look at a matter and see if it has any particular questions, not addressing the application, which the board does have a copy of the application. So if there's anything else you're looking for, information, or any other matters, any other proceedings you want to have related to this matter, such as site visits or what have you, now's the time to schedule those or make those requests for additional information. The applicant is here tonight to give the board a brief description of it. Knowing that this is not a hearing, so it's really to just see if you have information.
Move on.
Next page, live music.
I can barely hear you guys. Am I pushing this up?
Yep.
Please, come on up.
So this is just a hearing, what we were saying is that this is just a...
So I believe it's three, maybe page three or four.
Get an idea of what's going on.
Live music, the next page. One gives presentation. Live music when open generally to B is missing.
Listen, Mr. Schultz, at least give us a few words of explanation about what it is you're looking to do.
What would you like to know? I can barely hear you, sir.
Oh, okay. Just in general.
What are we gonna do up there?
What are you gonna be doing up there?
We're going to have a Oktoberfest. We're going to invite several serving trucks and some food trucks. And we'll have facilities, porta potties, we'll have a band going. And some other vendors. I don't know what else you'd like to know.
Is this October 22nd?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. It's timeframe. This is special permit.
Sorry, interrupt. This is a site plan and scheduled for October 11th.
Yeah.
Has the hearing date.
And typically you gotta prepare it and then sign it for the next week or the next meeting? That'll be the 25th.
Perhaps, we can talk about scheduling.
Okay. I just wanted to bring it up, that's the only thing I was...
The October 11th was the earliest that this could have been put on for, as a hearing.
Yeah.
We received the application and have been moving it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
So you have other plans?
In the future.
In the future? Do you want to talk about those?
Well, we can. I mean, I'd like to do a few weddings possibly, I want to do some other events and some arts and crafts things and along that line. You know, involve the town as much as I can. It works everybody that way.
And plug?
It works good for everybody that way, yeah.
Okay, you're saying in this, you're intending to host 30 to 40 events per year?
I don't know if we'd ever reach that amount, but you can always ask more and then don't use them, it's easier that way.
Yeah.
I want to learn how to crawl before I walk.
Okay, okay.
I was wondering, how many people do you think would be there at once?
That is a good question. Only, I can tell you, on the 23rd.
Yeah, well, I was thinking of like a wedding.
A wedding, I can't see more than, oh, what, best 200 people probably, you know, 150, 200 people.
What, I'm not getting married?
No, but your daughter did up there.
Yeah.
She did, yeah.
Yeah, there was like 60 something people.
Yeah.
Beautiful though.
Yeah.
I forgot about that. I didn't forget about it. You drove me crazy for two weeks.
I'm guaranteeing your bank you'd forget about it. So I take it most of the animals have been moved out?
All but two.
All but two.
Yep, and they were even, they were supposed to leave today, I believe the Thursday. There's gonna be nothing in there. Maybe a chicken or two.
Yeah.
I thought the idea of going sledding in the winter would be nice for the kids in town.
Yeah, it is, and we have a nice spot for that too. Really nice spot. It's faced to the southeast and nice, see Boston while you're sliding down the hill.
If I weren't, didn't have such fragile bones, I'd go and try it.
I don't look for any more trouble. Trouble finds me easily.
Dave, I don't remember what three and four is. I don't have any for the special permit.
Three is lodging.
Okay.
Four is things like art galleries.
Okay. I just, I know that you're going for one, two, and five.
One, two, and five?
Yeah. I just wondered if you were thinking three and four down the road. It's easier to get it now than later.
Don't know, I really...
Don't worry, I'm not pushing that way, I'm just asking.
I know, yeah.
Might make sense.
Might make sense.
This is an excellent map, that's for sure. Shows me everything that I can. So Google, I can put this right together.
I take it you've never been up there?
Oh, I have.
That good?
Yep. A while back, but I have been up there. That's the reason why, plus my good friend worked for you for a long time, Eric.
Who was that?
Eric, who was our previous selectman? I'm having a brain death.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Russetti, Eric Russetti, worked for you guys for a lot of time.
Yeah.
He stayed at my house and worked for you. So, plus we worked together at Riley, so...
Can't find kids like that today, nobody wants to work.
You won't, yeah. Oh, this is a pretty good application, I don't...
Pretty complete.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't have a lot of questions.
So you are gonna apply for a beer and wine license?
Well, yeah. Yeah, that's, you're gonna be receiving that probably tomorrow, the next day.
That'll go to the select board.
Select board.
Yeah, select board.
The only thing I was trying to figure out when I was on the fire safety, it says fire suppression to maintain in food prep areas. I didn't think you had any food prep.
Well, for the cafe.
Well, cafe brings everything in, don't they? She doesn't make anything there, does she?
Oh, no, she, no, she brings it all in from her home.
Yeah, so that's what I was trying to figure out. I didn't, I didn't see on this any food prep areas. So that's, I saw serving.
Well, we are gonna have food trucks up there.
Yeah, that's their responsibility to do all that, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's not yours, okay. But that's what I was trying to figure out, I'm going like, it's, they're the ones that have to worry about it on the trucks.
There's a definite division there, she's not involved with the Oktoberfest at all.
Okay, okay, good. I just, it was again, I just, when I saw food prep, I'm like, I don't see anything on the map. So if it's, if it's the trucks, it's up to them to deal with it, Board of Health.
Exactly.
They don't have, you don't have to do anything for them.
I like that. I like simple.
I think distance takes care of screening. It's a long way from the road. I don't think you've got neighbors that are sitting on top of you, so I don't see that as a problem. Lighting, that's not an issue. Noise control, noise drops up over distance, I don't see that as a problem.
Sledding can get very noisy.
Only if they come out into 56 and then you hear this dunk dunk. It's what comes after the music. I can't believe the coyote's singing some nights. Unbelievable. See, we should, we should sing back to them with Remington. It's a good song. I got a ton of them over by me lately.
So you won't have any petting animals, like a petting zoo or anything?
No. I'm trying to stay away from that if I possibly can. At a future date, I may aim to come down and have an amendment or something, but I choose not to do that right now.
It sounds like you're...
Like I said, I want to learn how to walk, crawl before I walk and soap and so on, you know.
Excellent.
There's other places in town that offer that too, so...
They can see, they can see the cattle in the pasture, they don't have to get near them.
I was growing up in New Hampshire, I always thought they were gonna stop on my feet anyway, so I wouldn't be near them.
So you do still have cattle?
Oh, yeah, I probably got, I don't know what's up there, probably 20 or so.
Oh, okay.
Lot of little ones, they were not running around. I'm walking people stopping on 56 taking pictures, you have no idea.
I do, I've seen it happen all the time. I love it.
Yeah.
That's what I want to see more of in town. So you gotta throw that farm stand out front. Gotta buy before you take the picture. Throw the pumpkins out there right now, make some money on the people stopping by.
Oh, yeah. They come and pester me all the time. When something's not right or run out, they get me.
Dave, did you have any comments?
At this point, we were in a position to help the applicant process the application. I believe there was a model application that was used.
Okay.
We're working with the applicant on some minor issues such as mailings. But I think for the most part, the applicant has been, would understand the process and will participate accordingly, so thank you very much for that.
I'll have all the mailings that have been, oh, and they'll be mailed in time.
Yes.
I couldn't, this is the best day of my life, are you kidding me?
So live music when open generally to B over by dusk.
Yeah.
Not to over by dusk.
And your attorney, Mr. Philip, tell him if he doesn't spell check, you get to take money back from him. Ag crucultral accessory, just having a tough time with that.
He's a busy guy. And his, his wife works as a legal aide with him, so...
Oh, so she might have checked this out, yeah, yeah.
Can't say too much, gotta watch it.
Yeah, you are correct.
Happy wife, happy life.
Yeah, I know that one. No, I'm good, I mean, yeah.
Anybody else?
The only thing I'd like to say is that this is number four in, and you know, after this, I'd love to see some way, somehow, number five, number six, whoever it is, that there's some connectivity between. And we figure out how to, you know, we, everybody talks about utilizing this as a growth opportunity for the town of Roanoke. And I just want to know how that's actually gonna happen. How is that actually gonna come to fruition? It's gonna be great for him, he's gonna have events, it's gonna be great for me, I'm gonna have events, Williams has got, everybody's got the events, but how does it help the town truly grow collectively? Because otherwise, it's not being utilized to its full potential, that's all I'm saying. So I'm just hoping we're moving forward, we can...
I'm waiting for somebody to build a motel for the people to stay over.
That's okay. It's not far off.
I know it, I know it.
You know, the fancy yurts out, you know, something to, you know, I just, I just hope that it continues to go in a upward, in a positive direction and other farms are able to do it, and I really mean it, that the town itself, not just the planning board and not just the individuals, the town somehow finds a way to connect all of this and make agritourism a true thing for the town of Roanoke.
Sounds good.
Look, just to pick up on Kevin's comment, that's a very good point. I can say that we're working on the master plan update, which had not been updated since 2000. Ag economy is prominent in the description of land uses that are modern. So it's in the master plan, acknowledged there. The Economic Development Committee, Economic Development Commission is aware of these opportunities. So I think as time goes, we can better publicize it through the master plan results, through the Economic Development Commission, probably updating its website, other initiatives, and if folks have initiatives they want to work together on, that's always a good thing too. So from here and here, and maybe find our opportunities that way.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I will say, sorry to interrupt, other towns have asked about this bylaw, we've given information, so there's some awareness in general, so, little by little, we try to. You know, I'd like to make a comment too, I'd like to say this, is that I think, to make it easier for a guy like myself, if you had a checklist of exactly what you have to do, and then you check them all, and then you know exactly what you need. Because when I entered into this, I had no idea, not a clue, not a clue. It's just like the butters, I had no idea. I went up there and I thought it was all done and, you know, and I'm not, I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, it could run a lot easier if someone had a checklist, you know, you go right down a thing, dun 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 dun. And then it makes everything goes a lot smoother, I think, and faster for everybody. I appreciate your comment. I will say we have a draft of such a device, of a checklist, we have to just go back and edit. We have a small department, so to do all these things is hard, but we do have a draft of a checklist. So we are aware of that issue, we do appreciate your feedback on that.
You have a small department, you got one.
I have one.
Yeah, yeah, but he's got 9,000 people to serve.
Yeah, wow. Believe me, on a bad day up there, you don't want to hear me. I'm sure you do some days, all the way down down the center of town.
I think, you know, I'm ready for the 11th, I mean, I don't, I don't have anything to add.
Anybody else, anything?
As long as, you know, David has everything he needs and, you know what I mean, we just want to... Hearing time next, and then all the abus have been notified, if anybody there, then that would be the last public comment opportunity, and then...
I guess we're interested to know whether the board, as in some other situations, is reasonably comfortable that they know the site and they're familiar with it, or whether you need to get more information by going outside. If you want to do that now, we can schedule that for next week, we just need 48 hours because that's a meeting. But the board members know they're comfort with the site, so I'll just ask you folks if you want advice.
I've been there.
Yeah.
So am I. I've been up there.
Yeah.
I've just been there for coffee, so.
And for food, way back. And for a wedding. Yeah, and for a wedding, way back, chicken pot pies.
Let's not forget the wedding.
Chicken pot pies with a bad habit of mine.
Are you still... Do you or have you, are you still selling milk from Cooper's Farm up there?
No.
No?
Not that we, we don't, we want to. The trouble is Cooper's, the old folks have pretty much stepped out and the young folk over there are not doing the same kind of job, and then off and out to production. And so they had to cut off most of their wholesale people. And then that's very unfortunate, but we did hook up with a friend of mine in New Hampshire and we're getting milk from them now. It's really nice milk, really good milk, yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, because Cooper's Farm, they make chocolate milk that's out of this world and the eggnog.
Oh, the eggnog.
It is good, there's no question about it, yeah. But this, this, remember when we were in Unitedis? They made great chocolate milk and strawberry milk, well, this gentleman we're buying from now bought the recipes from them. So you can get the same thing from them now, the eggnog and everything, it's really, really good, yeah.
Okay.
Excellent.
I'll be there.
Yeah, chocolate milk's a bad habit of Germany. So you said that public hearing's October 11th?
Yeah.
Yeah. Scheduled the time yet?
Let's see, it's three that night.
Oh, jeez.
I'd like to say 7:30.
Okay.
So we can confirm that for you.
Yeah, okay. Don't, do we need to ask if the public has any comment for this information?
Well, well, it's not a public hearing, but we can certainly ask.
They know, these young lads over here, anybody? Leah and Lyndon's on there.
Any comments from the Zoom people?
Leah, I don't have anything, I'm just trying to get back into, you know, more meetings and, but I do want to say I'm psyched to see that there's still traction with this bylaw. And, you know, to kind of heaven and days point about the master plan piece and kind of the connectivity piece, I think that's a huge plus and goal for all of us to work towards. So thank you all for, you know, the applicant that put the time and effort in and everyone for listening to it, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody here?
Hey, I forgot my daughter's wedding was there.
You know this is recorded and she can see this, right?
No, I'm sure she's all watching.
That's right, too.
She'll go to YouTube if she's listening.
So it takes, it's two weeks now?
Two weeks is our meetings, yeah. We only have two meetings, second and fourth of the month.
Yep.
That's our meetings.
I don't think we really need to vote to forward this, do we? For the public hearing, Dave?
The pre-meetings is...
Probably not, I mean, we just... You don't need to refer to yourself, the playbook doesn't need to refer to itself.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think this is just, what's in the site plan regulations, trying to be consistent with site plans generally and ag in particular.
I guess that's it then.
The only thing I guess more I was gonna ask is, is there any, to move this along into dot the i's, cross the t's, is there anything, I know I'm gonna rough up Dave, to have something pre-put together? That's probably not right, because if there's any, if there's any amendments to these, to the special permit, that's gonna, it's gonna be a useless document, and I was trying to...
What I'd be proposing is a special meeting with a limited purpose of signing, reviewing of the decision which you have before that and then for the simple action of signing it.
Okay, I'm good with that. I just want to, I want it signed, lost, and in your hands before the 22nd.
And I will have a decision written by then because, you know, this is important to do that.
Okay.
Like we have in the other circumstances where we move these ag site plans in any site plan or any matters quickly as we can, given resources and constraints.
Okay.
So in some respects, this is no different than anything else, so, but we will have something prepared. So if you want to talk about a special meeting, that's just a meeting, all you need is 48 hours notice.
Okay.
So as we get closer, after the, after the next meeting on the 11th, we'll need some time after that, but before the 23rd. Is that the event?
22nd.
22nd. So we can come back to that, I think the board can make a decision on the 11th on what data we like to use. For a special meeting, if you're inclined to do that.
So we don't need to set that now?
No, no, no. I would, I'm trying to talk, I'm talking to Tim's...
Yeah.
Tim's point of either having a decision at the night of the hearing on the 11th, which is ready to be signed after the hearing closes, or some other alternative plan.
Yeah, I just wanted to move this along, so on the 22nd, if somebody asks, you know, have you got all this done? Richard say, yes, completed, signed, here, look. So there wouldn't be any questions. Good, all right.
Good deal. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I said...
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't, I only heard the gentleman.
I didn't, no, I didn't. Oh, boy, here we go. Okay, good? Well, thank you.
All right, we'll see you.
I just came along to the off-meet steak dinner if I told this to Ann tonight.
You better get, you better get some baked potato with that too. Onto my favorite discussion. I couldn't turn that back.
No, that's Neil Damiak, married to Suzanne Martin's, Phil Martin's daughter.
Oh, okay.
He lives right next to him.
He used to work with my husband.
Was that right?
He's right next to Tinky Daras house, you know, the, the small house that became a bigger house and a bigger, you know, which you could, I haven't been inside, but I'd love to check, I've heard it's pretty cool.
Have you been in there?
No, I haven't.
I've heard it's a pretty cool freaking house.
Okay. Next up is Hilltop Estates, we do have a correspondence from Town Council, so maybe I could act on here and I feel that I should recuse myself.
Oh, crap, this is where I get to take over.
Yeah. It's all yours.
Thanks.
No, I haven't been here for the past ones.
What we...
The last, was I here for, I mean, you guys had a hearing in between.
No, we haven't had anything.
We haven't had anything, we kept on pushing it.
Yeah, so it's, because he had to change it, he went from the, we did the, you were here for when we did the special permits for the...
Well, I went out and visited the site with him.
Yeah, that, that's changed, he didn't want to do that, he wanted to do a subdivision with a private road. So he spent the last three or four months designing that, and he brought it before us, and we weren't sure it was really a subdivision. Town, county, referred it to Town Council, Town Council said no, and then he went back to redesign, and this came before the board last week, last meeting, and it was sent to Town Council for comments, and that's these right here. The week, yeah. So we're literally just going through comments, we didn't even start a hearing on this yet, if I'm not mistaken.
That is the question to ask, I've had substantial discussion on this matter. I believe there was one hearing where there was.
Yeah.
And then the other ones there was not.
I'm just, I'm struggling with...
I know there's at least one that I recuse myself from.
Yeah.
We can check the minutes, but I'm fairly certain that there was a meeting and there were residents from the public here that had a lot of questions.
I was here for that, I know Joyce Gallic was on it.
If you were here for that...
I was here for that meeting, Joyce Gallic talked and everybody, the whole room was full, you left, you...
Yeah, I've listened to it, yeah, I did the Carlson thing. Anita, I sent, I watched it and then sent her an email saying that I've watched it, so... Anita, I sent, I watched it and then sent her an email saying that I've watched it, so...
So then your question is, if you recall, and I have to look at the meeting minutes to verify this, whether or not there's any substantial conversation after that. Because if so, you'd have to watch that meeting, whether there was substantial conversation. If there was not, it was simply a matter of postponing it, you're all set for that.
I thought that's what it was, Dave.
The one.
Just the one meeting, everything else has been postponed and referred to council.
At that meeting, it was one road lots off of one road.
Yeah.
And now we're back to multiple driveways.
No, he, this is his design, that's what he's proposing now. That's what was, this is what I first started with, this is what he's proposing now. Yeah, it's, it's, it's difficult, so I guess what I wanted to do is first, before we get into it, let's go through what Amy sent back to us.
If you're gonna talk about that in the public, well, just acknowledge what it is.
Yep.
Acknowledge that you're not talking about it. And then if somebody makes a request for it, you'd have to, to provide, to provide that request, if someone saw it, because now you're talking about that in public session.
I don't have a, I mean, does anybody on the board have an issue with this being brought up? I think...
Tim, if I may, you should formally open the hearing.
The hearing's already been opened, this is postponed.
Yeah, it's just a continuation.
The matter was already opened already. This is just, the matter was postponed several times and now the board's picking up where it left off.
So, but she's right, we had to...
Technically, each meeting, you reopen the hearing or you recontinue it at a specific time according to Robert's rules. But that's how other boards do it. If you guys choose to handle it differently, that's completely up to you.
Thank you for that. If I could just clarify, so there, there was a hearing, the hearing was opened, the matter was postponed several times, the time's certain.
Yep.
The most recent continuance was from nine thirteen to tonight at six forty-five, past six forty-five. Board is procedurally picking up where it left off before.
What I'll do is I'll say at seven o'clock, we're recontinuing the already opened up hearing for Hilltop Estates.
That's right, and the matter was last continued from nine thirteen at six forty-five until tonight at six forty-five.
Yep, and we're opening it now, or we're continuing it now at seven o'clock. So what I wanted to first talk about from the, for the public's perspective is we had sent some questions to KP Law and there was some discussion back and forth on the questions and KP's come back with a, a final comments, I shouldn't say final, come back with comments to us about that. And I, I guess I'll open it up to the board if anybody's got any questions on these comments from Amy. I had trouble with one of them, but the lot one and two, but now I understand that was referenced to what Kevin brought up, the original plan being lot two, lot one and two was out on the, on the Brittonell Road and now lot one and two's in the subdivision, so that was my conclusion.
Can you just reclarify for me? What they're trying to attempt here is a private road?
Yes.
With, how many lots are on this, if I'm right, even?
If I remember right, they've got nine lots.
Nine lots.
That would be on a private road that would come under the subdivision control law. So they'd have to follow our subdivision control law and since, if I'm not mistaken, Dave, this wasn't put in as open space, it's just standard subdivision control.
That's right, so as a result, it has to meet the requirements for area and frontage for lots in underlying zoning district.
And then this private way comes up because initially, they, when they first came to us, it was a common driveway. And KP had said no to that, so they'd come back, I think it's been a couple months, month and a half, to do this design to come back to us.
That's right, the applicant acknowledged that their first proposal was a common driveway, which was not a subdivision. As a result of that, they modified the plan, revised plan's been circling into the board, it shows a right-of-way instead of common driveway. And that's in the back of the packet.
So that's, so this is, and then we'd sent this to, this subdivision to KP to make sure that this one was correct and that's the comments that she's sending back to us now.
Yeah, she's responding to the plan showing the right-of-way as a modification for the prior plan set that showed the common driveway, all the responses are to the latest revised plan.
So it's not gonna be a subdivision, it's a private road with nine houses?
No, it will be a subdivision, but it'll be a subdivision with a private road. So the town, unless it's changed into, as David clarified earlier, unless the developer wants to bring before the town to be accepted, it's, I'm guessing it's under homeowners' HOA agreement, that they would have to take care of that whole road amongst the nine houses. It wouldn't be anything with the towns, the town would have no responsibility. I personally, that's where I would like this to go to, more I think about it, to Joe, because that's gonna have sewer and water under a private road. And I'm not sure that's really a good idea. It's my opinion, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but that's my opinion. That's why I'd like to send this to Joe and get his thoughts, since he's gotta take, he's gotta maintain the water and sewer lines under there.
And have to see in the diagram how deep some of those lines are.
Yeah.
I don't want the town, I really don't want the town involved in that thing because that, that's gonna cost horrendous if they had to get in the...
Remember his comments about a year and a half ago?
And how they're putting in on top of something.
On top of it? It was like eight, eight feet or even ten feet in some places, you know, for either drainage in or...
If something goes wrong, you gotta dig down ten feet to find it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I would like to see, I don't know if it's a request I can even make, but I would like to see this and this, because I can't see lots.
Yeah.
And that's really hard for me to, or at least have a better understanding, I don't even feel like all the lots are in...
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have it drawn, that's a good point. Can we request that from...
Can we get something, this is the new, can we have something that looks like the old did, so we can actually see where all of these lots are?
Yeah, that's a, that's a fair request. So you want the revised plan set to be shown, showing the whole site?
Kind of just the lots, don't need the elevation, I just wanna be able to see where all the lots are.
But you want it to be of the scale, showing the whole site development.
Yeah, the whole subdivision.
So if there's nine, I'd just like to see what each of these nine lots looks like by themselves.
To Kevin's point, I was having a tough time trying to find out...
Whether without glasses.
Well, I was trying to find out the distance of this private way, is it a thousand feet? Is it five hundred feet? I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out. I, I just, I couldn't find, it looks like...
Four ninety-nine, a hundred.
But on the other side, it says a thousand forty-eight seventy-two, so I, I, you know, anyhow, that's, that's something, Dave, I guess, I request is just...
No, these comments are...
Up to the, almost to the cul-de-sac was a thousand.
Yeah, so...
And then there was nine hundred and seventy...
I didn't know if anybody on the board had any comments on Amy's, I guess that's what, we'll try to get out of the way first, then we'll get back to the actual subdivision discussion. I, I didn't...
They said it doesn't meet frontage requirements?
On lot one and two on the, it's, she said, in my opinion, the new plan does depict a subdivision pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one L. However, the subdivision as depicted creates lot one and two, which do not meet the frontage and therefore would be unbuildable. So is she saying, Dave, the ones that have the detention base in number one, they don't meet frontage? Or is that goes back to the original one? That's why I'm struggling.
Right, so on, referring to the revised plan.
Yeah.
What is shown there is lot one and two.
Yeah.
She's saying that that, those two lots do not pass muster in the subdivision because they do not have sufficient frontage. The reason being is that they have less than two hundred feet of frontage along Hilltop Drive. When these were created by A and R, the understanding was that they would be accessed from Brittonell Drive directly, and Brittonell Drive...
Oh, okay.
...portion has the two hundred feet reach of lot one and lot two. But these are not intended to be accessed from Brittonell Drive, they're intended to be accessed from Hilltop Drive, that's the frontage for the purpose of this subdivision and that's where the issue is.
And that's what the address would be?
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm, I'm struggling with her comment, or I guess you'd sent back to her that they're gonna require frontages on Brittonell. Aren't we into a lucenary frontage when we do that?
Because the steepness, that's why they're not using it.
Yeah.
So they add more frontage from an area they can't access.
Exactly.
How's that accounted as frontage?
She's not counting it as frontage.
She's saying...
She's saying because of that issue, they do not. And then in order to make these lots work, they'd have to have two hundred feet at least on Hilltop Drive.
Okay, Dave, that's, so she's saying...
And that they cannot use Brittonell for the purpose of frontage.
She's saying these two lots have to be taken out of the subdivision plan?
Right, because they...
Okay.
Or create to one lot.
Or otherwise alter this.
Make two other lots bigger.
Make two lots bigger, otherwise modify this.
From nine to eight.
Yeah.
For change.
I'm fine with that, that's what I was trying to pick up, okay, I'm good with that.
Do you still need two hundred feet all along the private road?
Yes.
Because of the subdivision.
And frontage concludes around cul-de-sacs and all that?
Well, that...
Any curb cut is frontage. On a radius?
Just to answer that question, so along the radius, it's, it's not treated the same way that linear frontage is treated?
Oh, it's a setback, too.
Setback.
Yeah. That's where they've got this line that you...
So it's more?
It is up being to, what they do is they measure it from the setback line.
Which is hard to see and I just found it, this line right here? That's where they're saying where the two hundred feet is, because it's on a radius, they do the setback. So they go back from the radius and say, that's my quote frontage right there.
Frontage is frontage, right? It's linear foot of curve, right?
Yeah, and they're doing, now I see it here, too, they're doing the same thing over here on lot four and lot five. Okay. All right. I didn't see that before, Dave, I just picked it up right now, because to Kevin's point, this is sort of with all of these very tight elevation lines, it's sort of hard to read this thing.
We didn't have any larger plans for this subject disrenewed, what we had.
Okay, that's fine. I think from a standpoint of, of moving forward, we need to get a, a good set of drawings from Klee, other than this little, and you've got that as a note already, so. So any more questions or comments from, on the email from Amy?
So we're talking, just to clarify, in my own mind, we're talking about these two lots who are correct, okay?
Yeah, lot one and lot two.
Yep.
But she's saying it has to be on a revision. Hilltop Estates has to take one and two out or make it so it has...
Or change the, I just wanted to make sure it was on the right ones.
Yeah, or they, if, I mean, they could take lot one and two and combine them, or I think Dave or Kevin said they'd have to rearrange the other lots to get two hundred.
Right.
So, because right now...
I just wanted to clarify that I'm looking at the right space.
Or try to build on a slope that's about twenty-two degrees.
And that's what this is defecting, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's...
And that was what I went and looked at.
Yeah, so I'll, since this is a hearing, if nobody else on the board has any comments on, on the letter, and the public hasn't, Dave doesn't see it, so I'm just gonna move on to the actual subdivision itself, Hilltop. I don't...
No, that's correct.
They don't have any, so, okay, let's move on to the actual subdivision. Of course, it's Hilltop Estates. This has been submitted to planning board, we've been waiting for this. The first page outside of the cover page shows what they initially had come to us for and got approved, which was all of the special permits for state lots. And again, to Kevin's point, Dave, I can't see if, it looks like there's still estate lots, but I don't know. So that was one of, gonna be one of my questions, which I was gonna ask Storm, I forgot that I get to have fun with this meeting, is that, is there a process with all of these estate lots to un-special permit them and turn them into a subdivision? Because, again, I'm not an attorney, but if the frontage for these lots are now gonna be on Hilltop Drive, the actual lot itself as a special permit, its frontage is on Brittonell, so it doesn't make a lot of sense, so...
Right, so the general process would be, I mean, it's permissible for a developer to come forth with multiple plans.
Yeah.
In this case, you see one plan, which is apparently the basis for the subdivision.
Yeah.
This subdivision, this special permit, the estate lots don't have to ever be built. They never get built, it lapses on its own.
Okay.
If they come forth with a different project showing the subdivision, then that's what they build and that is a plan of record.
Okay, I just, and two things always confuse me, so that's why I haven't, you know, you've got a, you've got a estate lot and you've got a subdivision sitting on top of each other.
I think what you're seeing there is, is the rationale for the lots themselves.
Okay.
And what you're attempting to do, it appears, is not use the access as originally proposed along the edges there.
Yeah.
But to use one common access to serve most of the lots.
Well, and I thought that's what Amy's letter was saying, she was ignoring, because the, the frontage for a lot on an estate lot's based upon fifty feet. And now when she came back and asked us about, you know, commented back on the subdivision, she was commenting on two hundred feet of an actual subdivision, she wasn't making any comments on the fifty feet from the special permit.
Right.
So that's why I thought she took that layer away and she's only working on the subdivision layer right now.
I think what she's looking at, if you look at the lots themselves, you'll see that the lots open up as you get closer to the proposed street.
Yeah.
And where they open up, many of the lots have at least required frontage. So that satisfies that aspect of it. It's the lots that don't have the frontage are the ones that have been called into the question.
Okay. I just, I guess from a standpoint of me, I, I have a hard time with a subdivision having these, I guess what they call them, flag lots? With, you know, with the, the, so I guess to Kevin's point, I really wanna see the whole thing of what he's laying out.
Of course.
That'll tell me if they're flag lots and maybe we can make comments during that, that time. So, okay, that gets rid of...
Flag lots, like a letter lot?
Yeah, it's...
Something like this?
Yeah.
Isn't that what we're, I mean, aren't we kind of trying to get away from these types of Z's and...
And I think, I think he wants to do that, Kevin, with the subdivision, but without seeing the whole layout, I, I can't answer that. I don't, I don't think we want to until we see the drawings.
Right.
Okay, any comments on the original one?
No.
Let's go to the, the second page, which is where there's a lot of confusion on just being able to see. I, I'll open it up to the board and see if they get any comments. I know you're, you're chomping at the bit, Dex.
No, no, I'm not chomping, I would not say. I mean, I, I...
And if you want to use this drawing with that drawing, I'm okay with that.
Well, then in that case, personally, I am shocked at eleven percent angle, I thought...
Yeah.
And to me, the whole thing, I think I, on the following page, I said, where do you push the snow? Where's the snow go?
Eleven percent, it rolls down.
And if I will, you know, where do you push the snow? You can't push it across the street because I don't, you know...
Somebody's property.
It's somebody's property, personal property.
Yeah.
Question, because of the steepness of it, if we have heavy rains, does the flooding come across the road?
And wash it out.
And not only wash it out, but you go into that other person's yard.
Because this is gonna be paved, I'm assuming?
Yes, yeah, it'll, it'll come to subdivision standards, which will be...
Has to be paved and buried, so it's going to a previous surface.
So you have a waterfall.
So a grate at the-
I mean, they'll still- they'll have sewer and water grates, but still-
Oh, yeah.
We've seen- we even saw at Bryce Lemon, how that water can just go right over the grates and come into people's property.
Especially when you got a course of leaves there.
Yeah, yeah, so I-
Unless it's a continuous grate all the way across?
Yeah.
That could still be clogged, I don't know.
Another question I had, where's the house located on the other side of the road? I believe the gentleman was here for the hearing when he was talking. I live across the street. My driveway is something across the street, and that's kind of bothering me. You know, if you're pushing snow or anything else with a driveway there, it's wide open for anything to go through there. And not only that, should there be a barrier to crash into on this site, on that side of the street where that gentleman is?
Jersey barriers?
Yeah, a jersey barrier, because you don't want to go into his house, you don't want, you know. I'm thinking of the steepness of it.
I haven't-
You know, it just, I know I'm playing devil's advocate, but I just-
No, you're not.
I just worry.
I, every winter, when I go to work early in the morning, I'm waiting for the neighbors who have driveways at 11 or 12%.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sliding down into Brittonell, because ice, ice builds up.
Oh, yes, it does.
And this is on one driveway, this is nine driveways with two, maybe three or four vehicles a day, you know, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Well-
It's the same location that it was previous, directly next to George Jones's house?
Yes.
Yes.
To the right of that?
Yes, it's gonna be to the right of it, yeah.
And the engineering of it was, and it was a while ago I went there, but they can't really just cut into it.
No.
It's not long enough, right? So you don't have the distance to get the lower-
That's why I think George Jones's house literally sits on the other side of this 11%.
And his goes, but his goes like, his driveway goes that way.
Yeah.
And he comes up not straight up.
To me, I mean, in our regs, I do believe it's eight, you know, and we do allow for a little bit.
We did nine for Carlson Way?
Carlson Way, correct.
We did give them a 1% grade increase.
Yeah.
And that was, and we actually checked at the time with Gary, who sent the water crews over there to look at it, and the DPW, and I think it was Kevin Carthy at the time to look at it, and they were fine with plowing it and being able to get the trucks up and down, so that was fine. I don't know what 2, 2.5% does on top of that, but I look at this, and this looks pretty steep.
Yeah.
Compared to a 5% grade above it, so I can't, you know.
What's on the other side of George Jones's, or the other, they've gone all the way down the street, this is the least, this is the most minimal grade?
To be honest with you, I couldn't tell you.
I'm curious if you're coming up, I mean, what do you got, Lot number, Lot two, it looks like?
I think they had a lot of wetlands up there, if I'm not mistaken.
Up on the top.
The whole floor, I did drive by there, and the whole, you know, that whole stretch of land is very, very steep and stupid.
Yeah.
Think there was opportunity to move it there and farm.
I guess one of my comments is, I'd really like Julian or somebody to explain to me these detention ponds, because my gosh, that one's huge.
Yes.
It's the size of two, it's actually the size of one property. I don't think you guys can tell me I'm wrong, that's pretty large compared to what I've seen for detention ponds.
That's right, and something back there.
Yeah.
And to me, it should be put in six months ahead of time for the ability for it to settle, to pack it and whatever, you know, I don't hate to see them come in, and start working it, build it, and stuff starts running to it right off the bat, because, you know, I don't want to see it taken off.
It's probably ledge under there.
Well, and Dave, that's a question I've got to ask. I see this thing called drainage easement. Is that draining down into the detention ponds from Lot four, three, and two? Is that what he's trying to do? It's behind the houses, and it's probably a, was it 50 feet?
Are you talking adjacent to why, what's shown as detention basin number one?
Yeah, detention basin number one, if you go to the right on the drawing, you see that swath that's called drainage easement, that's behind the houses on Lot two, three, and four. Yeah, let me point it out to you.
Yeah.
This thing right, this- This monster thing right here. I'm trying to figure out, is that just like a water path down here? Is it a-
There's one kind of sticks out the other side?
Yeah, there's one here, and I don't know, I can't believe that this, with the slope here, is gonna put anything in there, it's gonna go that way.
That's probably to discharge and-
Maybe it is.
It's, yeah, that is part of the detention basin system, it appears.
That's actually says F, oh, sorry.
I couldn't bring access-
Access drive.
So that's something to clean it out.
Access drive.
Oh, so that's how the HOA people have to have somebody come in there and clean it out? Well, I'm just asking for the board, because I'm going like, I've never seen anything like that. I mean, we, didn't we ask him to do something like that on Bryce Lemon to- Because of the little bit of extreme-
Yeah.
Velocity of water coming off a hill.
Yep.
So.
And-
Yeah, I just lose sense of it.
Hate to say this, but, you know, because Quinn is not wetland.
You know, that's something else.
And to me, you know, unless, I'm just wondering if we should, you know, hire a private concern to oversee the wetland stuff.
Well, we could ask Peter, because he's here, but that's a request that you can go to the conservation committee and ask, committee, conservation commission, and ask for a third-party person if you so choose. To look over when they want to do reviews, when they're in the review stage.
Review stage, and while it's being constructed.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
I feel that a third-party would probably be apropos to make sure-
Yeah, somebody that's well-knowledged. I mean, I guess for me, I don't, maybe I shouldn't be getting into this deep, because we don't have Quinn's report back yet. Dave, is that a fair assessment? I mean, we can get comments, but without Quinn's, we're really sort of-
Right, Quinn started their review on this. I'm not sure where they stand at this point. If you have any particular questions, or things you want them to focus on, or otherwise I can sort of-
I think that'd be a good for the board, is we come up with some more questions. Like, Dick, you've got questions? I've got a question about this easement. We get those to Quinn and let him finish his report, and then we can delve into this deeper once we get the Quinn report back. I don't want the rest of the board thinks.
You'd like to circulate questions as well?
Yeah, I think that's great. One concern I have is that, and I wasn't there for the 8% to the 9%, to then go 8% to 11%, so what happens in 50 years when it went out here, and somebody says, "Well, they went 11%, why can't we go 13?"
Yeah, 15, yeah.
Why can't we go 15? It was slowly-
Yeah.
Eight to 11, eight to 12, that's, eight to 12 is half of eight.
Yeah.
You know, 1% on grades gets greater and greater and greater, and you go up there, and I was there, and I looked at it, and in all honesty, I said, "Okay." I stood there, and I'm like, "I can see how that," but then you look at this, and you look at, so the statement from Quinn, I think, I don't know if there's a statement from Quinn or a statement from the director, Director Buckley, to, you know, to say, "And if it's doable, then maybe the regulation shouldn't be eight." And I think that was one of Mr., if I remember correctly from that hearing, one of Mr. Blair's comments, where comments were that Chuesbury or others or wherever were, and I remember, they were X. So Rutland is eight, whereas X amount of other towns are higher, and I'm just trying to educate myself as to what is a true safe standard, what makes sense. So if our regulation is low, then maybe it's low. If ours is good, then I think 11's a stretch.
Yeah.
So are you asking for Quinn to provide commentary on what a typical road slope is, some sample?
Is that a fair question?
I think so.
I think it's an excellent question.
Not only that, I want to know, you know, if there was flooding, if, you know, something is going, where are you gonna push the snow to, you know, and all that?
It's a good question. I guess, Dave, like, maintenance, road maintenance, in winter, heck, even in summer.
Heck, yeah.
Because you're gonna have a gravel road outside of there that they've got to maintain.
Yeah.
And we do get a lot of rain around here.
Yes.
So, as we've seen lately, so, you know, it's summer maintenance of rain, winter maintenance of snow and ice.
Correct.
And I guess the caveat to that is, is Rutland DPW won't be doing it.
No.
So.
What happens if private guys are like, "I don't want to do it either"?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What liability, I guess a good question, what liability does a town have?
And that's what I wrote, I wrote down, just that.
Quinn, but, do we ask that?
We all know that at some point, nobody's plowing this, and nine homeowners are screaming, "The DPW's gonna go in there and open the road," because the evidence can't get there.
Yeah.
Something that they end up doing at other locations.
Does a town have liability insurance, just in case, just to cover anything?
Maybe a good solution to this, and I'll let the board question me, is the next meeting we have, ask Director Buckley to come here, so some of these questions, we could ask him instead of coming up with two and three and sending it to him.
Right.
Let's ask him to be here, so we could get some of these out of the way.
All right, and we'll circulate the plan.
Yep, we'll definitely give him the plan, yeah.
You'll have the plan at some point.
Yeah, let him take a look at it.
I agree.
Anything else on these couple pages with the overview and the slope?
Now, and I also would like a comment from Peter about, you know, having an outside concern, maybe coming in to, you know, to maintain an eye on it, or something like that.
That's a good comment, Dick. Can the board get some comments back from the ConCon on this, just inter-board discussion?
What's the general comment you want to comment on?
Comment on-
You know, while they're building the detention pond, you know, to have somebody that's, Quinn is good for that, but he's not a wetland. I'm just trying to think, you know, should you have a wetland, an experienced wetland overseer of the project, or something like that?
I mean, are you looking for references? Because certainly, because this is a subdivision, it's in the board's purview to require, to request peer review.
Well, then that's it.
Because typically, if, and Dave, you're telling them from wrong, the ConCon issues order of conditions.
Correct.
And then it's just up to them to do checking themselves. They don't have a professional check it, if I'm not mistaken.
It depends on the type of project. I'm not sure you're gonna get that level of oversight-
For nine houses.
For this generality here.
Yeah.
You might get that level of review. You're not gonna, if you want to make sure this detention pond works, this is part of the subdivision process.
Yeah.
So the time to do that will be now. I think we should get the conservation to look at just the lots in particular.
Okay.
The location, instructions on the lots, hours, respect to resource areas. So if you're entertaining the concept of a third-party to review this detention basin and make sure it's-
As it's being built.
He's looking for-
As it's being built, you want.
I want to make sure that is, I know that Quinn could do it. I just, I don't know, I'm just, because it's on the steepness of the hill and everything else you're creating here, and I just feel that I- Where have, has that been one like this before?
From the edge of the detention pond, if my eyes are pretty good, that's a 60-foot drop. It goes from something 20 down to 62, so that's a 60-foot drop. That's pretty significant. From the edge of a detention pond to the-
Over what, 100 and something feet?
Um, I think, let me look at it. It's more like 80 feet or less.
Yeah.
So you, it's almost a 45-degree slope.
Yeah, and to me, I mean, I just soon have, I just soon have an expert there to say, "Okay, this thing is working out. No, you need to do thus and thus."
Really, with a 45-degree slope, this side of that thing could just, it lapses, right?
I guess, Dave, a good question for ConCon, and then maybe even Quinn, is there something that Carl would need support for if he needs depend, to Dick's point, for detention pond review during construction?
Yeah, that's-
That's what I'd probably ask for, is, you know, if he did, because, you know, Carl admits, "I'm not a structural engineer, get one."
Yeah.
So it doesn't hurt to ask him to get up front, since we know this is gonna go forward, so if it's approved, so we just better be prepared for it.
Yes.
All right, excellent comments.
Definitely, I hope Wendy and Leah about that liability insurance, because I hate to see something wash out Brittonell Road. You know, or something goes wrong, you never know.
I don't know if I can answer that.
What is up in the, what is up behind all this? Wetlands?
Well, that would be, when we actually get a drawing that shows the area, we'll be able to answer that question.
I'd like to know.
Well, I'd like to know, how many, what is the watershed around that that's flowing into this thing? Is it something that ought to be looked into, or there's gonna be, um-
Well, remember, Dick, right now, most of that, and I could be wrong if I'm, again, I'm not an arborist, but with all the trees gone, you're not gonna see as much water, because they haven't grubbed it out. There's still, if you want to call it ground vegetation, that's absorbing that water. When you remove all of that, is when you'll see things move.
Yeah.
So.
But I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know.
And that's gonna happen when we start building houses.
When's the last time we had a hurricane around here? It's been almost 30-plus years, I believe, now?
Let's just keep it that way, okay?
One could only hope, but in all reality, I hate to be in this town for crying when one comes through, because you're gonna hear people scream bloody murder.
Yeah, well.
So anyways.
And I'm asking Dave, because I can't read it, is Bruce Wilson, is he the, is he the land guy, the land surveyor?
Uh, Wilson is a surveyor, that's correct.
Okay, so then, so the civil engineer is Michael Vitrova, okay.
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying, I couldn't remember, so, okay.
I asked this question, but who would be responsible? This was maintained by an HOA. How do you stay on top of it? Because this all drains into the town, drains into the different things, you know, is this, should there be somebody to make an inspection every so many years, or?
That's why we want Director Buckley here next time, so we can ask those questions, because I want him to basically be okay with having town water and sewer on a private way.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think, and again, you guys have got way more experience than I do here, are there private ways that have town water and sewer? I know of private ways with well-inseptic, which, that's a whole different story.
Yeah.
But are there any private ways in town that have water and sewer? I don't know that for a fact.
I don't know that either, and I think that's a good, very good question.
I don't think so. So I would, I like, I like Director Buckley's opinion. We're putting in a private way in a subdivision that's gonna have town water and town sewer in it.
Yeah.
That's built on a mountain.
Yeah, to Kevin's point, that has a 10 or 12-foot drop to pipes to, what's his opinion on that for maintenance? You know, he's gonna have, this is my side from the gas side, he's gonna have valve stems that go down 10 feet that turn valves off.
Wow.
With a box at the top. Anyhow, so that's the reason I think Director Buckley is a good choice to have in here next, for the next meeting.
Okay.
Any other comments on these two, and we'll move on to the next couple ones, which is basically just slopes. They've got the off-site utilities. It goes over, this is something I guess I'll ask Dave. Are these, was the intent, because I didn't see this on the, anywhere in documentation, are these E1 pumps? Did you, do you know that, or? Because I couldn't, when I went through the documentation, I couldn't find any place that it said E1 pumps on the property.
I'd have to check that. I think we do have a stone water report here.
Okay.
We have a stone water report here, I'd have to check that.
I know on the, on the estate lots, they were E1 pumps. I do know that, so.
On that part of it, yes.
Yes.
But now the houses are being moved over.
Yeah.
I, at the bottom of this, just before Brittonell, I thought it is all down-built. I think, I like to think it was all gravity.
Well, I think that should be a question, Dave, for the builder. Are you intending to use E1 pumps for your sewer system? Because it goes over to this pump station-
Yeah.
That's over on Grizzly Drive, right on the edge of the Brittonell Estates.
Correct.
So, which means that road's gonna stay open and we were gonna close, because they need access. They're gonna put water and sewer there.
Yeah.
So that stays open. Anybody have any comments about, to your point, Dick, this detention basin two, right at the edge of Brittonell Drive? And this is on the drawing that's titled Proposed Site Plan for Off-Site Utilities. I just caught this last night when I was looking this over, on this drawing.
Yeah.
Right here, right at the bottom, I just, it's in little letters, and it's almost covered up. It says detention basin two.
Correct. I remember him talking about that.
And part of that detention basin is literally in the, partially in the road. If I'm wrong, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but it looks like-
Is that the correct right-of-way?
I don't know.
Drawing, or is it not?
Maybe it is, and maybe Brittonell is, is-
Just the way it works.
Because it looks like he's saying there's a 12, I don't know.
Yeah, I can't tell. It's very hard.
So I guess maybe, Dave, a good question, not only with the, is a better set of planned drawings? Because the board's having a tough time.
Well, we've already asked for that.
Well, even with this, because we just asked for the one, any of...
I was just, I'm sorry about that. Uh, can you check to see if you have it? Because I believe when this originally circulated, there was a large plan set distributed to each of the board members at that, at that time. If you don't have it, let me know. I do believe we had a larger size, maybe 11 by, uh, 11 by 17.
Yeah, but...
I'm a pack rat, so if not, I don't have a...
I don't, I don't think I'd go back that far. When, when do you think that was?
Uh, April.
Yeah, no.
Back as far as April.
Okay, no, I go back to July right here. It's at home.
If not, we can take care of that. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think it's probably better. Yeah, I don't... Nope, I don't even have a... Will those be 11-by-17s?
At least 11-by-17, I would've thought.
I didn't, yeah, man. So I guess maybe we need to get a, we don't have an, get an updated set. I guess I'll...
You got roughly a 3-by-5 right there now.
Yeah, that's C, that's almost C or D set, yeah. Other than these last couple drawings that are off-site utilities, anybody on the board have any other comments? Well, mine is, is I agree with Kevin, these utilities just don't, and that's again, I think, instead of going any far with the comments, let Director Buckley help us out here. Since this is a hearing, I will ask if there's any comments from the public then. Leah, you're the only one. Say she's good. She's making chemicals. Okay, um, Dave, do you got anything to add?
Not at this point.
Okay. I guess I will ask for a motion to continue to win.
The next meeting's October 11?
Yep. 6:45 or do we?
Yeah, how about next year?
Well, the problem I have with 6:45 is if we've got a 7:30 hearing, 6:45 is not gonna be enough 45 minutes to take care of this.
That's fine. I mean, the hearings are a point at a time. If you go over on this, you, that's, just adjust the schedule accordingly.
Okay.
Is that the case?
Do you think the applicant will be here on the other?
Well, that's what I was gonna...
We will make sure the applicant is aware of...
The more people here, the better, so...
That's what I was gonna say. If Quinn, if we could, I, I guess I'm looking for a party. Quinn, Director Buckley, and Mr. Blair. So if we've got any questions on Quinn's comments, I will have then, um, we can ask Carl directly. And, um, hopefully in two weeks, Mr. Buckley will have a chance to look over these and have comments prepared or questions, or April will answer our questions. And then Mr. Blair and if Mr. Vitrova is here, will be able to answer any questions we might have. Anybody else that you think we should have?
Who's bringing the refreshments?
I don't think we need, uh, Mr. Monaco and, and Mr. S, uh, Knife here. I don't think at this point, we need police and fire at this point.
Any comments we can easily circle, specific comments?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Because that was gonna be one of my comments as we get into this more. I'm not worried about police. I'm worried about fire with a kid that might be up there with a nebulizer, trying to get a truck up an angle in the middle of winter. I mean, if Seth's okay with that, I'm okay with it, but I wanna, I wanna hear that. And I did see that on the plan, they did have, they did have fire hydrants in here, so I was good with that.
Especially with, uh... Yeah, you're right, with ice and all that.
Yep.
And when you turn a corner to go up...
You gotta go all the way to the end and turn around and come back. Because you're not gonna be able to turn an ambulance around unless you're gonna go driveway on that road.
Up to the cul-de-sac and come back down. But I'm saying when you're at the base, you gotta have a running start.
God, how are you gonna do that when you come into a T?
Exactly, because this steepness is right off the bat. You go just very little and then up and then...
It's Kevin's point. Where do we call the, the percentage? So that's why I want Director Buckley to...
Yeah, okay.
And also if the percentage of 11% is for X amount of footage versus, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Remember, this gotta, maybe there is a formula, maybe there isn't. But you know, I know if I was driving, real old drive the ambulance and the wheels are turned on the front, you're not going straight when you hit the ga... You know what I mean? Like you're turning the corner and you're just gonna...
Fishtail right up.
Not, you're not gonna get that much traction, but maybe.
Coming down to it, because I used to do that at rear-wheel-drive Lincoln, like that. In Worcester, I would come down like this. Sorry, those were a long time ago. All right, um, so I wanna continue till October 11, 6:45. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
So seconded.
Any discussion? Ayes, please?
Aye. Aye. Is the extension beyond okay?
Do we need to get a signature?
Couldn't hurt to just further extend it, the final action deadline, just to have a buffer.
When they come in next week, let's do, or next meeting, let's do that with them. Or do, are we...
I'm gonna propose something here to...
Right now?
21623 to 3123.
Okay.
Just as a buffer. I think once we have some, the people in the room next time, if some refine plans, I think they probably know more realistically what the final schedule's gonna be.
Okay. Any ayes? 4-0.
What, we need a motion in a second, though.
We did. Uh, motion was...
Oh, you're gonna include it in the same motion?
Motion for what?
A motion to extend the final action deadline.
I wanted to get the, uh, the continuance squared away. We got through the ayes, we didn't get through the nays.
I'm sorry.
And so that's 4-0.
I just...
So I guess the last were motion to extend, um, final action.
So moved.
All right, then second that. Any discussion? Uh, a, 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 ayes?
Aye.
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 Nays? 4-nothing on that.
Hey, Norm, come on in.
Hey, Norm, can I put x de facto on the planning chair?
No. You're gonna put your signature on it.
Yeah, I've done that. Doing that at every source of light, waiting for the chair to stop and the music to... What's today, 27th?
Yes.
All right. Let me pass that back to you.
Thank you.
I pass the torch back to the young lad to my right.
Actually, you missed one on top here.
Oh, I missed a signature?
That's the continuance section.
That would be the inexperienced portion. Okay, now...
Okay. Ice Lemon Estates. You have a Quinn report? I don't really see much of anything.
Uh, I do. The pavement must be repaired and I put down there, or replaced in total or whatever. How bad is it?
Um, just chunks. Bindercoats, this has failed near Main Street. There's a chunk about that big around, missing.
Oh, come. Because why didn't the, yeah, why the rest okay, but not there?
And, you know...
And to me, you know...
Nick, I would say that's compaction issues, but that's me personally. I'm not a mechanical, I just got experience.
I, I did not notice any, you know, divot around it or anything else. Uh, I'm gonna say that some piece, some piece of construction equipment, probably.
Then, what's the thickness of the pavement there? Has it checked out? It should be three and a half?
What is that, two and a half, I think? Bindercoat is supposed to be two and a half, I think.
The top coat?
No, binder coat. That's always down there. I think binder coat is two and a half, and finish coat is either one or one and a half.
One and a half. All right, anyways.
It's gotta be repaired.
There is still, up closer to the top of the hill, there is still at least one gap where they had to tear up the pavement to get utilities across. And that has not been repaved.
Did, I guess I need to ask, September 13th. I think that's me and I was else. So the board went ahead and, and gave him his approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the whole, the whole list of conditions that, uh, Kyle Holgren came up with.
Put together, okay, because I know Director Buckley was questioning that wall, all kinds of stuff there.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as there's conditions with it, and that wall is, is engineered.
Engineered.
Yeah.
And engineered and inspected by an structural engineer.
Yeah, I just, I, I, this is my opinion for the board. The engineer that Klee has for the crossings, phenomenal, incredible. I just, I don't think we're getting the reports in the documentation. His design of it is great. I'm just, he's not there to watch it being built. That's two different things. You can design a great structure, but if it's not built exactly to what you want, that doesn't make it a great structure then, so... And I don't know if that's true. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I'm just saying that I'd really like somebody to give me reports and pictures and stuff like that of how, when it's being built, because that's the requirement. I don't think we're getting that, Norm.
No.
I, I can't disagree with you, but, but it's kinda one of these things where, you know, I, I, I don't care whether it's a structure like that or whether it's putting in the water lines, the sewer lines, or anything else. We don't have anyone inspecting there full-time either.
Yeah.
You know, the, Quinn goes over at certain times, takes a look at one particular little section. Who knows? You know, and to get something like that, you're almost going to requiring a clerk of the works, someone that's on-site at every minute that anything is being done.
And I thought that's what Tom was hired for myself, and not only that, aren't we supposed to be getting monthly reports from Mr. Blair? Not, not Quinn, but Mr. Blair?
Technically, yes.
All right, and to me, we have never got it. It seems like, not for a long time.
Not, not for ages. Never mind on this, but for any situation.
Yeah, correct.
Maybe we should just have a, this is my suggestion, a little come-to-Jesus with him about our expectations? And, I don't know, that's just my opinion. I'll let the board decide.
And we've, we've done that before.
Yeah.
And we got a few reports, this is going way back when, and then all of a sudden, we don't.
Maybe we need to press it harder.
Well, you say, why, why keep approving things if he's not doing?
Yeah.
Things we ask for, definitely, request.
I'm okay with just saying, Klee.
Especially on stuff like this, when you get major, big, large, non-standard, everyday stuff, something big and beyond, that's not in general...
And I did write in here for, you know, sewer testing, who does this and is the town present? When they do a sewer testing, and I thought it was the town that was supposed to do it, aren't they?
I thought, and I could be wrong, that Joe looks over the test report. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. We could ask him that question next week, the next meeting.
I know that, uh, when they were putting the water lines and the sewer line down Calvin, um, Charnak Hill.
Yeah.
That the town was out there doing the testing and all that.
You're right, Dave.
Once they got inside, do they wa-watch somebody there or do they themselves do the testing or?
This is a while back, but they did, when Carlson Way went in, um, and this is again Neil and Kevin McCarthy were over there when they were gonna be put in service to make sure everything went in correctly, you know, activated correctly. I don't know for testing if they were there, but they were there for activation. So, um, again, I don't know. It's a good question for, uh, Director Buckley when he's here next, uh...
Yeah, I guess, you know, I don't even know if the town has the capacity to actually do those.
He's gonna tell you, because some of us will read Facebook when he's got three employees.
Yeah, well, what I mean, I would, I would almost think that Blair probably hires some firm, just like for the gravel and that on, on the base, Yankee Engineering, for testing for the gravel.
Yeah, because in one of these other reports, Carl wants the report, maybe it's this one.
Uh, yeah, sewer testing results.
Yes, yeah, he's, he'd, he'd like to see those, and I don't think he's got them yet. There was another one that had, what was the, uh, video that Carl needed, that, that, uh, Klee needed to get to Director Buckley that, uh...
Yeah, that was up at the top of the hill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He had to get that to him. Uh, what's, video, video, uh, where they take the snake, the...
Oh, okay.
And they basically run it through and chase it through and then get the video. Joe was looking for that, and I think he got it, but I don't know.
And I just, you know, a copy of the sewer testing results, it just doesn't sound like something that the town would give them. It'd come from a company.
Then Joe would review it, and if you've got questions, go back to either the company or Klee and ask questions.
Question is, is it a certified company and all that, yes?
Well, I'm hoping they have a PE engineer that stamps stuff.
Wow.
Because in...
Do we know?
I don't know that.
There was, there was a section, either going down Main Street or out of Charnak Hill, that actually failed the test at one time, and they had to go back in and do something to fix it.
Well, there was that, that one on, on the side of the road at Charnak Hill where the truck drove on it and, and it's, the, the compaction on top of the lines failed.
Oh, yeah.
And Klee had to come back and fix that.
Yeah.
But that was on the outside.
But I remember there was, there was one, one time on some part of that project, there was a test, came back and failed. And I don't know if they had to go back and dig things back up again or what they had to do.
So I gotta ask, what's this here for? The homeowners trust, is that just information?
I asked.
Okay.
Because of the fact that, you know, homeowners are supposed to be taken over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anything more on the Quinn report?
No.
Sorry, John, I had... Because I saw this like 2018. That's like three years ago.
Yeah.
And, um, we're not...
So, did you tally up the number of houses that are there and all that?
Well, I did read something in here that he couldn't move ahead with past... What was that? Past phase three? Maybe I'm reading this wrong in here. Or maybe it was phase three that had to be finished before they could take it over. I don't remember.
The number of houses, I think it was listed in here.
Yeah, the number of houses.
Oh, wow, there is that. It was going into...
Well, there was something in here that I, I felt that, uh, even it wasn't our special, in our conditions, it should've been in here also because it is their responsibility and that's the rail-trail connection.
No, I saw that in here. Yes, let me find it for you. I read that when I was going through this. There was a discussion. No, it's in here, Nick. Let me find it.
Article four, they're talking about when, uh, the trust gets moved from, from Blair to the homeowners.
75% of the lots in the subdivision have been conveyed to purchases.
Yeah, or upon the elapse of three years after the first lots, whichever shall occur first.
And I think three years has elapsed.
Well, 2018, March would be three, way past three years now.
Yeah.
For this homeowners agreement. Darn it. Or was that, was it a sport?
Well, so I guess, you know, there's definitely a question. Mr. Blair, has the control of that trust been turned over to the lot owners?
Um, also, I wanna see a tally of his, uh, deposit.
Bankbook?
It's $50 for 75. Or there, whatever houses there, it's up there. Because I don't want what happened over here.
On Britnall?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I, I have to agree with that, but if...
Maybe I'm wrong. I swear if I read...
The, uh...
Oh, maybe that wasn't here. Maybe that was, uh... Oh, maybe that wasn't here, maybe that was, uh, um. Brittinella Estates, not Bryce Lemon.
Yes, Brittinella.
Brittinella Estates where I read it, Dick, I'm sorry.
I just, I just find this, this kind of, this part interesting, you know, they talk about that, at that time. The sponsors shall transfer control of the trust to the lot owners. And then it says the lot owners shall, shall elect by majority vote.
Yeah. Elect who?
How?
Oh, you get to get, you have a meeting.
Who's gonna call the meeting?
Um, all the people that own houses in the area.
Yeah, right, you know.
Hey, I, I lived in a subdivision, and that's how we elected, um. Somebody would decide to be in charge, they'd put together a flyer. And back in those days, the seventies, you could actually around and put stuff in mailbox without being arrested. And they'd say there's a meeting, and it was, we had a, it was called Clots Park, it was a little area down there that's. The, uh, we had counties back then, so Allen County had a recreation group, and they had little, what do you call it? Open, uh, covered area that you could sit with picnic tables. Go down there, have a meeting, elect, uh, at time it was president, vice president, treasurer and secretary. And they'd be in charge of the subdivision group, we didn't call it homeowners in Indiana, it was subdivision group. And they'd be ones that'd be in charge of making sure the maintenance was done around the little cul-de-sacs at the front. Um, they would make sure if the city wasn't doing their job, they would, uh, get in touch with them.
One in New Hampshire that, uh, where I owned a condo, that were in charge of all the maintenance to the building, apartment, maintenance to the parking lots.
Yeah, you had to pay a fee to that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I think condos is a little bit different. I think a condo, you know, association is a little bit different. It's, it's similar, but, uh. And, and I guess. You know, particularly in a condo, yeah, you had to pay a fee into the.
Right.
The condo association, there's no fee here.
Yeah. Other part of my point was that I don't know that it would be up to the builder to establish this group.
No. He should.
He's gotta turn it over to.
Yeah, it, it doesn't, it doesn't say anywhere.
Oh, it's not specific of.
Right.
Who he turns it over to.
Right. Just to the, to the.
Guess we need to fix that, don't we, next time?
To the lot owners, that's all.
This is an applicant shall contribute fifty dollars, time of the celebration within the subdivision to a homeowners association trust fund to be managed by the Bryce Lemon Homeowners Association capitalized. So Bryce Lemon Homeowners Association.
Yeah, it's gotta be formed.
Should be a thing.
Yeah, so.
Yes, it is.
Who forms that? Is this document form it, but it's not ready for?
Initially Blair forms it. Because until you get to this seventy-five percent or three years or whatever, he is the sole trustee.
Yeah.
Once you get to that point, then it gets technically turned over to the lot owners. I don't have a, I don't have a hint how.
Well, the, the other thing, Norm, is in three years, that, that first house could have been bought and sold three times, so who's the lot owner? Cause who he sold it to first might not be the one that owns it now.
Right.
Right, but the, I mean, I was looking at the fifty dollar contribution thing, that money should be somewhere, and it also says right after that. Number three, page nine, monthly written reports shall be submitted to the planning board after the progress. Of work on site. Any difficulties encountered, if two consecutive reports are not filed with the planning board, the board will be requested. The board will request the building inspector stop issuing permits. Says it right there.
Wow. I missed that.
And then it says, Dick, to your point, a twenty foot wide easement bordering their pond from mass wildlife property shall be granted to the town.
That's, and that's the one. It was supposed to go, it doesn't say, but it.
Supposed to go through.
Over to Park, uh, Park and Park.
Yeah, it didn't say.
It didn't finish saying, and number, something else I, I have in here. If once this homeowner group takes over. Can they turn around?
They can't dissolve it. That's part of the subdivision of open space, they cannot dissolve it. Cause remember they wanted to try and do that.
How do you know? How do you know, does it say so in here?
It's in a, it's a subdivision bylaw. You can't, you can't dissolve a subdivision. Maybe I'm wrong.
No.
But how, how do you, you know, this, if, if they dissolve themselves, nobody takes over for three years or five years, is nobody doing anything?
How many houses there, seventy-five, say there's seventy-five houses, then I look at Director Buckley and say, whatever it costs you to maintain that road divided by seventy-five, and they all get a bill.
Maintain the road or the ponds?
Anything.
All it says in here is a.
Any work that the HOA was supposed to do, that the town has to do, they're getting a bill for. That would be my opinion.
And then they turn around and through the town?
Nope, then we put weans on it, mechanic weans on their house, and they can't sell it.
I know.
That's how that works out.
I, has, has the town council looked this over?
They've approved the homeowners. I'm sure. Well, I guess I, I just think that maybe.
Is it feasible or ever an option to contact one of these existing homeowners?
Oh, yeah.
Come and just say, hey, are you aware that this exists? And then that homeowner could go to, I mean, is it, you know, at some point, do you just go to one or two and say, hey, we, we were just looking at this, we wanna make sure you guys are aware this exists? We don't know, you know, maybe you guys, then maybe, cause maybe there's not one homeowner there that even knows this.
At least in phase one.
Yeah.
Supposedly.
Nobody in phase one knew.
No, they knew anything about it.
That's what I'm saying, so we just have somebody that should know, and you get the names on within there to say, cause.
And, and.
They could be liable for stuff.
And they wanted to, in phase one, they wanted to come up a way that the town would take everything over and they would dissolve the HOA.
Yeah.
And we were like, no.
I'll never say never.
No, but there was no way with the existing subdivision bylaw that could happen. Or, I'm sorry, not by law, regulation. Subdivision regulation.
It seems, it seems that that deadline has definitely passed.
Mm-hmm, so do we?
It's reasonable for us to, uh, talk to Mr. Blair, have him in here and say, have you turned over this trust to the homeowners? By what document have you done it?
And who was the homeowner you turned it over to?
Yeah, you know, who you turned it over to.
And if not, why not, yeah?
And then I guess my next point would be, Norm, I guess would ask, if you haven't turned it over. Maybe you should inform all of the. Houses that you've sold to, I'm saying addresses, I don't know who they are, but the houses. That they should be forming a HOA and taking it over. Is that?
I don't think there's any requirement for that.
Right, I, I agree, I don't think there is anything that, that says it's the builder's responsibility to establish. And you see that, that it is established.
There is a document associated with each lot. It's not in the deed.
Oh.
But there is a document associated with each lot. That is part of the transfer of the lot to the owner.
And Blair has said that that is included.
Yeah.
With the package.
And the purchase and sale.
Yeah.
He sent me that, I actually read that. And that's when I made Marilyn to comment to one of the homeowners that your attorney should have caught that because.
And that's, that's the big thing, it really should have been, at least.
Yes.
To me, I always think, that's something the attorneys should, should.
When you're going through your closing, he should have said, listen, here's a homeowners agreement that you're in. Responsible for in either three years or when seventy-five of the houses have been conveyed, four months after the seventy-five thousand is built. You as a one-seventy-fifth owner are now responsible for.
Let me wonder if seventy-five people aren't aware of that. How does that happen, oh for seventy-five? That doesn't make sense. How can seventy-five people, how can seventy-five separate attorneys all miss this?
It doesn't make sense.
No.
Not at all. And I'm not saying it's the builder's responsibility about, about how, how does seventy-five attorneys miss a ten-page document that says?
I was curious about that, cause there was more, I think, there was four people at that that said they had no idea about that, I'm going like.
Yeah.
I would, I'd be going back to your attorney, owe my money back, cause you did a closing on a house, and you didn't inform me that I'm a part of.
I wonder how many of them, you know, what, right now will be uptight.
Oh, a bunch?
Yes.
And, you know, like I say, the, the one thing is, I know. That document for the homeowners agreement is not a part of the deed.
It's referenced in the purchase and sale agreement though. Cause that's, I read Klee's purchase and sale, and there's a, I didn't ask for the whole one, cause I didn't want it. I said, send me the section in your purchase and sale that talks about the homeowners. And he sent that section, I read it, I go, it's freaking black and white right here. It tells them about it, and, and if, and to Kevin's point, if the attorney, if you got seventy-five attorneys that are all signing, having you sign off on a purchase and sale agreement. And a realtor has to go through that p- purchase and sale too, and nobody tells them there's a homeowners agreement? That's, uh, I, I'm gonna go with, I'm going with Kevin, it's a little odd that they all.
Maybe we do get a full document purchase and sale agreement, cause what if it's on? Page fifty-one dash A or something, you know, it wasn't in the file, I, I don't know.
Is it something that we should? Readdress in our subdivision rules and regulations? That it probably should be brought up in a better fashion than what it is? Well, because if they're taking responsibility for detention bonds and stuff like that, and these poor people are going in there, they have no idea now?
Well, that was their, that was their argument on, to Norm's point on phase one, they didn't know they were responsible for kidding.
Exactly, so what about the rest of them? Uh, you know, we could be creating a problem for the Sleckman, like they don't know what's coming. And to me, for crying out loud, what happened over Brunel here, and supposedly I thought it was written, but I haven't heard a blooming thing from it. That if the HOA did not do anything about the trails or any of the open space, taking care of it. That the town had to go in to take care of it. And the HOA had to pay for it, and if not, the town would take ownership, I thought it was in there, would take ownership at the end.
I can't say that.
Because the HOA is no longer there. And to me, for crying out loud, but. I, I feel that maybe this type of a thing should be. Taking another look at.
Well, it's part of the open space. That's what I'm looking for. Convenience of having open space, cause if you just have a regular subdivision, you don't have an HOA. Unless to the point.
You can, if you have a killed up, you're gonna have an HOA.
Cause they've got a private driveway, but if the town was taking that over, there wouldn't be an, an HOA, would there?
Probably not, probably not.
So, I, that's, I don't know, I'm really, I'm looking at this thing going, wow. Cause this HOA is actually recorded. In the Worcester Registry of Deeds with every parcel, cause it's got accessor, accessories parcel. B seven through thirty-four, that's twenty-seven lots. And then C eleven, one through eleven, so there's another eleven, so that's thirty-eight lots right there that. They've recorded this. HOA in, so. I, I mean, I don't know if that's phase one, two and three, I don't know.
Each phase has been twenty-some odd lots.
So that's just maybe phase one then.
Roughly, but I don't think, um, the women that were working on. When you first come up Calum Hill, not the one on the, right, the one on the, the one on the right, um, lemon.
Yeah.
They have, yeah, did?
That won't be.
That won't be.
I, I think, Norm, you're right, we just, when Klee comes in, in two weeks, we just say, so who's got the book? Cause I remember it say he's got a, a pass savings book or something like that. Who'd you give the book to?
And have they been notified?
Do they know what the book means? If they're in charge?
If they, if they are now, you know, should be in charge, and has he notified them all?
Do we need any clarification from legal?
Well, in my opinion, uh.
Oh, we're having everybody here in two weeks, let's just have her too. Big party.
Let's put it this way, in, in the future, for crying out loud, if, if they dissolve or not, nobody does anything?
It still exists, even, even if nobody.
Even if it exists, you know. I mean, if you have an emergency, the, the detention pond has to be taken care of, sure, you're gonna try to turn around and, and collect it from everybody, but. What if they turn around and, and take you to land court and say, we dissolve it and.
Maybe you'd have to see in the regulations about it, if we're doing not, the homeowners could dissolve.
I don't think so, man, I think we went through that last time with them, and there was just no physical way. There's three ways, three options or four to who in, in charge of it, and how it's transferred, but there was no, cause it was part of the open space. Subdivision regulation, so.
But, yeah, for why, you know.
I'm sure when we did.
Way back when we first had it, you know, the town took care of everything. And now all of a sudden, because, I don't know if it's stormwater or whatever it is, things have changed. If, this is being pushed off now to a homeowners association, which is something new that. This was not done way back.
No. And, and you know, similarly, my guess, my guess would be if something goes wrong with one of those detention ponds, the town is still gonna go in and fix it.
Yeah. Question is, who do they charge? I don't think it'll be anybody, it's my opinion.
Taxpayers.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly it. With the three guys that the DPW has.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, can we at least get the fifty times seventy-five back from Klee and put it in the general fund, so when we have to, we'll have a couple hundred bucks from Klee anyways? You should.
Well, look for this, but if it, if it wasn't for Addison Redfield, that money was not supposed to. Because originally I wanted that to go to open space, and I wanted open space turned over to the town, originally.
But that legally couldn't happen.
Yes, it could.
You sure?
Open space, open space can be turned over to the town.
Yeah.
Yes, but money's collected for it, I didn't think we could tran, we could.
Well, that's special condition.
Okay.
And it was voted. But Addison, Addison is the one to, and I know, I know you agreed with Addison, but Addison's the one to push for the homeowners association.
I, I think we, is, is it fair, Norm, to ask Amy? Is there some procedure that we should be doing for homeowners, like a?
Well, that, that's why, why I ask.
I, I, I think it's not a bad idea to ask her, cause we're sort of poking in the dark right now.
Oh, yeah.
I would, I would be in favor of that.
Asking, asking KP, is there some? Procedure, or is there something where, two things, is there a procedure, I guess I'll be, for attorneys, you gotta be direct. Is there a procedure that can help us with the homeowner transfer process from builder to, uh, trustee, let's call it? And secondly, um, is there anything we could do, and you could send her a section of, of, um, the open space reg? Is there something here that we're missing that we should maybe add? I mean, that's, anybody else, I mean, that's.
Well.
I'm afraid that we've got, we've got. Gaps, and I don't, I don't have gaps.
Just to simplify it a little bit, I would, I would say, you know, whose responsibility is it to establish the homeowners association?
It's a good one, the homeowners association as. The lot owners being trustees. Because it's, it, the homeowners association has been established.
Well, that's true.
It has been established.
Whose responsibility is to facilitate?
The transfer from the subdivision owner to the lot owners. What's the process and whose responsibility is it?
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, Norm, basically, how you do it?
Yeah.
I mean, if you got, if, if KP has, you know, like they've done it before with, say Shrewsbury or somebody like that, just give us a. Outline.
And like you, like you mentioned, how many lawyers have not seen this or whatever? And, and do the people now at Bryce Lemon turn around? And not only sue their lawyers, but sue the town of Rutland for crying out loud, not to be out of it?
You know, may, maybe it is, or has become so commonplace. That it's just expected.
That's a good point.
That, that you're gonna be a part of a homeowners association when you buy in the lot.
Everybody buy A and Rs.
And who the heck wants a homeowners association?
Oh, I had one when I lived in Chicago, we, we weren't allowed to put up, um, what do you call it?
Clothesline.
Clothesline, thanks. And the shed can only be this large, and if we would have pulled, we wanted to put a pool in, which that wasn't gonna happen, on, on top of a septic field. Um, you had to go to the trustees, this was in Illinois, and get approval.
Right, and I think a lot of homeowners associations did, you know, function like that. And didn't have, uh, as many responsibilities to, uh, maintain the.
Yeah, I was a rebel, my wife put the clothes line up anyhow.
Not surprised.
Come and get me.
Not surprised.
So, Dave, you got that down for town council?
Yep.
Any other thoughts you have on this?
On this one?
Not on this one. Okay, anything more on Bryce Lemon? Okay, anything more on Bryce Lemon? Then, uh, we're on to Brentwood Estates subdivision. And I am assuming at this point, that a second footing has probably been poured. I was over there yesterday, and I saw Glenn Coppola, he was working there and trying to pump the water out of the crossing.
What did he s- see, I'm not a, I'm not a concrete, what does water constantly on top of concrete, how does that affect it, after pouring?
You, uh, you can dissolve it, because it hasn't set up, and it takes a year for concrete to set.
But technically, concrete sets better underwater, it is stronger when it sets underwater.
If it's flowing, it'll wash.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, if it's flowing, if it's, if it's not contained.
Yeah.
Okay, so then this is actually a good thing?
Yeah.
All right, I, again, I'm not a concrete guy, so I, I'm looking at, you're pouring something in water, I'm just, uh, it doesn't make sense to me, but that's okay.
Well, that, that picture, okay, that form was put in before, wait, wait, let me take a look. Yeah, that was put in before there was water there.
Oh.
This picture was taken after the rain, after it was poured, and after they had actually pumped a lot of the water out, because the water was actually over, over the form.
Oh, boy. But you're saying that even with that, concrete is okay in standing water?
In standing water, but, uh-
That's how they built the, uh-
Bridge, bridge abutments.
That and, uh, what's that, what's that big dam out in Hoover Dam? That's how they built the Hoover Dam.
But it was, there was no water beside it.
Oh, Lake Tahoe was there forever.
No, they had copper dams.
Yes.
Yeah. Of course, on that one, they also had to put in cooling pipes.
There was so much heat coming off of the, uh-
All, all, all through the dam, those cooling pipes, they circulated air through the TV.
All right, well, I'm, I am, that was my only question, really.
Anything else on Brentwood, then? I don't think I say, I'm, I'm assuming that that second footing has probably now been poured, and I think Glenn said that actually had to be three.
Are they, on that first, looking for crossing, are they gonna do, they've got that pea gravel on the side of the road, is there anything gonna go over that, or, you know, like you, right now, you drive over the first crossing, and on the sides, they've got the orange fence, that plastic orange fence, and there's like pea gravel there, but you step on that pea gravel, and it'll just move everything down, as somebody might have done when they were taking pictures of the water.
I'm sure that's not, that's not finished, that part of it.
Okay, all right, good enough, I, again, I didn't know, because I, without any drawings, it's sort of tough to see what the thing looks like. All right, that's my shot at the top.
But Bear Hill Two, how close are they for finishing a house or something like that?
I've been up to, I drove up to this weekend.
Yeah.
Goes all the way around, that's the next one.
Yeah.
Um, one house is zip, what is it, the zip stuff that they put on?
Okay.
And they were starting on the roof, but there's no siding on it.
All right, so it's a ways away, yeah?
Well, I would say, at this, at this point, they've probably dried in that one house.
Yeah.
You know, so, and, you know, this, this is my, kind, kind of, kind of my, you know, my fears, you know, okay, supposedly, he cannot get occupancy permits.
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, until, until Brentwood Estates is paved, and he's running short on time to get that pavement done.
Yeah.
And I'm just thinking that he's gonna come crying to us, oh, I got nothing to be, uh, personal sales agreement, can't get the asphalt companies to-
I'll tell the board that I'm gonna be very adamant about that one, we, we gave you la- the latitude we gave him is, we gave him two houses at the front of Arrowhead.
Correct, yeah.
So, there, the latitude's out.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we also did, we let them take lots off of Bear Hill Two and put them as A and Rs in the front.
Yeah.
So, there's two, we took care of you, sir, so get your freaking asphalt ton.
Does the building inspector know?
Yeah.
Does the building inspector know that he cannot issue anything?
Yes.
It should be part of that electronic, they, what's that?
We positive, a hundred percent, I want it in writing, a hundred percent, that he knows that.
I can't say that.
Yes, he's aware of it, it's in writing, part of the permit application for each of the houses in Arrowhead.
Okay.
Okay.
See that moving van come up? The only two houses that are permitted for occupancy are Nicolaunus's house, old, his old house, and Helly's old house on that Arrowhead.
Yeah.
Because they were existing houses.
Yeah.
Listen, again, someone can come along and say, no, we don't have an occupancy, occupancy permit, we're just occupying.
We're squatting.
Yeah.
We're squatting.
You know, you never-
All right.
Okay, anything else on Brentwood?
Um, the only thing, uh, Dick, did you read that second to last bullet about the proposed eas- trail easement, that's what I was trying to think of.
It's still, yeah, hanging tight.
Okay, that was where I saw it, I was going through this. And Carl's a machine, man, he found exactly what I found on Bear Hill Two when I was driving it.
Yeah.
God, he's good.
Okay, Bear Hill Two.
The road looked good when I drove it, wasn't any water, unfortunately, there was dirt and stuff on it, but, you know, I'm not gonna lose sleep over that.
No, no, I didn't, I don't see any problems there.
The house drop-offs, as you come in off of Arrowhead Way, where the two houses and Mr. Helly's old house is, is, that's Palmagussin.
Yeah.
So, um-
So, anything on Bear Hill Two?
No, I don't know.
And-
You guys sent this letter to them, correct?
Yeah.
Good, actually, this is- Great job.
Kind of getting out of, uh, out of water, there is, some others, but anyway, this is the letter, which, I don't know, we, we agree, we agreed to send, I, I did take a look at it, and it has been sent.
Good, great, great, to the fore, great move.
You know, tonight, we're gonna get a chance to, the meeting was held.
Oh, I think-
Yeah, five o'clock.
Yeah.
It's a matter of fact, if you want to know.
Okay, backing up a little bit, Planning Board Bylaw Subcommittee.
Bylaw Subcommittee is, will be moving on to major home occupations, and I would request that members bring the, uh, handout, the second handout in Dick's pamphlet, the Dick's, uh, units that has the grid in it, it's from Vermont, state of Vermont.
Did I miss the handout last time around?
It came original meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's from way back.
Okay.
Yeah, we're about, if you don't have it, the other thing-
Dick, do you have the PDF of it, or the electronic version that you could send me? Okay.
Uh, the other thing is, as we discussed at the last meeting, I'd like people to review the, uh, the existing bylaws from the existing town bylaws.
Okay. And master plan update.
All right, me just before we move on to that, um, I don't think we assigned a date for the next meeting, would you like the meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday of next week? I don't have any confidence with either of those days, I don't think anybody else does.
I keep trying to make it on Tuesday, but then I end up in different parts of the state fixing nightmares.
But would Wednesday work better than that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday is definitely bad, because I've, I've gotta go to Southborough that day for management meetings, get yelled at at why my jobs aren't done.
I'll try, yeah, I'll try the sixth, let's put it this way, what, if they ever, um, watch my mouth, get their rack together, I hope the heck they have about six meetings for crying out loud, the Ad Commission.
It'll be Tuesday?
I want one every day of the week for crying out loud, get this freaking stuff fixed.
Will that be on Tuesday and use the space?
I'll, no, I'll, I'll come, I'll come to your meeting on Tuesday.
No, I mean, they're not, you want, they don't wanna use the space in the ad annex. That was a problem, it was one time.
I would say I'll-
So Tuesday, I guess?
Is it six?
You, you, it sounds like you're busy on Tuesday, so Wednesday.
No, if we can get ten, let's, let's try-
Tuesday, I can be there, I will be there Tuesday, this Tuesday.
I'm sorry, I'm a bit of a no works, okay, Tuesday, four and six.
Wouldn't that be the fourth?
It's fourth.
Oh, October, Jesus Christ.
I mean, Dick, we're moving into the fall, baby. Moving into that fun time when we get snow.
No, okay, well, well, let's, let's do it.
Tuesday?
What time?
Six thirty.
Oh, that's even better, then I can, because with the sun getting lower and lower, my union crews don't wanna work past dark, so if it gets dark, they're out of there.
Okay, uh, last item, district local technical assistance.
I think we had the two items, master plan update.
Oh, sorry about that.
District local technical, I'll just take these together, move, pardon me, move from one item to the next. The master plan continues to be updated, um, there's drafts of the cultural and historic resources chapter, housing, land use and transportation. These chapters are pretty near to being done, uh, the master plan steering committee will take a last look at it, and then we would go from there in terms of distributing it to other stakeholders. Uh, what's left is the economic development plan, open space and facilities and services, uh, the draft has started on those chapters. Open space is being, uh, moved primarily from the open space committee under the conservation, however, because it is a master plan chapter, it has been incorporated into the greater project. Uh, the master plan steering committee continues to meet pretty much every month, this meeting has been canceled for this month, um, at the request of the CMR PC, so there'd be no meeting this Wednesday for the master plan. And then the agricultural, uh, then the district local technical assistance, so earlier on, the planning board agreed to sponsor a project for the AdCom, the long and the short of this project is, when land comes up for, to come out of chapter sixty-one, it goes to several departments and commissions, including the agricultural commission, so what they're working on is a grading schedule to determine certain criteria, so when a piece of land is gonna come out, they can make a recommendation based upon some rational factors. So they're currently working on a matrix and a grid and criteria, and that is also ongoing, so you'd expect, well, this has to wrap up by the end of the year. The likely deliverable is going to be a list of criteria and some examples for how it can be applied, so that's what I have on those two items.
Who is gonna do that review?
The agricultural commission is doing, is creating a matrix, a grading system.
But who does the, will the agricultural commission take that matrix and do the review when sixty-one A comes out?
They would do the review under their jurisdiction, this is not to apply to any other board or commission, this is for their jurisdiction, so when they make the recommendation that they're required to make, they could make the recommendation and set, and, for example, say, we should think the land, we think the town should consider keeping the property for a reason, then they can cite the reason from the grading that they come up with.
I think that should be distributed to all boards, because we're all trying to do the same thing, right?
Well, I think the planning board would look at this from a different viewpoint, and have its own different criteria for why it may, think land should be held by the town or not, as the planning board has its own jurisdiction. So this is what the, this is the AdCom piece of it.
Because they're thinking from an agricultural-
That's correct.
Keeping in agriculture. And we at the planning board are thinking of, what, what costs less to the town, open space land or houses? Uh, open space, two dollars an acre we make versus two thousand dollars minus?
Is it a nice place for another fire station, or?
Or a treatment plant.
Yeah, treatment plant.
Switch treatment.
Because, I tell you, that's one of the things, I, I don't know if Leah's still on or not, but, uh-
She is.
We have one well, I'll tell you, just, you wanna go to the end, and then I can, all right, tell you what Central Mass-
So Dave, just back up, is there a, and again, a master plant, our master plan, since it's not this month, do they set a date for October?
It's been scheduled for the last Wednesday of each month.
Okay.
That's the standing date for that meeting.
Okay, well, is there any other items to come before the board?
I just, just like to let you know, yeah, I thought I had it. Can't grab it, it just disappeared now, son of a gun. Never mind, anyways, what, what the thing was, the Central Mass Regional Planning, um, our transportation was canceled due to the lack of, uh, material to be looked at, and I wrote him a two paragraph report to my, yeah, to Kevin down there, and I said, you should ask why certain things aren't done in various towns, and I brought up Holden bypass. Constantly gonna push Holden, why, why is all of a sudden, tip, they're gonna put in, uh, Grove, Shrewsbury Street, Main Street is gonna be all redone? All you're doing is just move, you know, able to move traffic, which is blocked up anyways, and where are you going?
Yeah.
Still slow, why aren't you putting the effort into a bypass, which you used to have on Central Mass, had it on the shelf since nineteen seventy-six? This is ridiculous, why haven't you, as a transportation department, talked about maybe a rail line coming out to Rutland, or out further, you know, to pick up people? I, why aren't you doing this? Well, I got a comment back from, from Chrisney, and he says, Dick, I believe it's October sixth, your towns are supposed to be involved in a two-hour discussion about long-range transportation on this subject?
Who is involved in that?
Well, not Leah anymore, because she's off the line, but, uh, well, I just got it tonight, so, I've gotta, you know, I get, now I gotta dig it out, and ask Kevin to send it back to find out, because to, to me, for crying out loud, I'm, I'm sick and tired of, you know, everything being swept away, let's, you know, in the future. Why don't you fix one ninety, it was supposed to go all the way to New Hampshire, instead, the Federal Clean Air Act, you, you laugh at it, because there are ten stoplights between one ninety and the New Hampshire State Line, yeah, yeah, so trucks and cars have to stop all the time, stupid, anyways.
That would be nineteen seventy-two, Mr. Nixon initiated the Clean Air Act.
Yeah, yeah, anyways.
One comment I just had back on it, I don't know if this would put in on the agricultural project for the sixty-one A, is there, in conjunction with that, um, parameters set forth on how, you know, we come up, oh, yeah, this is great, but then how are we gonna buy it, how's it actually gonna get paid for?
Well, that, that's one of the things, at this last Selectment meeting, I asked them, please, you know, to look into the CPA.
That's great, because that company'd be like, this is perfect, we need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Where you get it?
And you're looking around, and we don't have it, it gets sold, and so all this work could end up being a moot point if we don't have the money to actually make it.
And we've got saving, and the, and the state has been matching, a hundred percent, all these years for crying out loud, and then we've had-
Yeah, we-
We blew it, we blew it, there is, you know, you can go after grant monies, uh, there are-
You can work with the watershed, if you've got a hundred acres and they want twenty-five, they'll throw money at you to buy it.
Worcester will do that.
Yeah, that's Worcester Waters, yeah, that's what I, I was talking to the young lad about, Derek, is it? I spoke to him, a younger kid, when we were looking at Watchuset Street, he said, listen, I, I, we'll grab six acres of them on the Princeton line, because wet anyhow, we'll take it, and we'll work with you to try to, I said, well, I'm not, I'm just asking questions, I'm not, I'm not negotiating anything, that's not my purview.
So, I mean, is there a current fund?
Zero.
Wasn't there one?
Yes, yes, the town, the town set up a- Yes, yes, the town, the town set up a fund, and they put five hundred dollars into it.
But there's been nothing put into it since.
That is correct, so there is a fund.
But there's active account.
Correct, and also the, the.
For land.
AdCom also has an account, and they got, I think it was six, a little over six thousand dollars in that one.
And I'd sure like to take a portion of that one point three million dollars from RDIC and put it in there, but I don't know how to do that.
Yeah.
Because I think it's going to the general fund, is my, I like standing.
We would like the one point two million dollars that we had to sign off back in the annual town meeting for transportation, and charge all these people that are packing out here on the road. But better than that, I would go to the state, the state had almost three billion dollars for crying out loud, why didn't they, the state unfunded mandate? Why don't the, our selectmen and everybody else go down there and scream at them and say, hey, pick it up?
I actually, who did I talk to about that? Because it's taxpayer money, because my thought was, take that money and just put it into a, a fund for schools and transportation for the next ten years.
Yeah.
And then the towns basically have some extra money, but because it's taxpayer money, they can't, they have to give it back because of some law that's thirty or forty years old, they have to give it back to the taxpayers.
But if they come up with that much money, why can't they do it in, in advance, what's, what's coming?
I don't know, you don't think the IRS is gonna give you money back after they audit the entire country, are they, with their eighty thousand workers? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eight forty-one.
Yeah, adjourned.